Meeting to order. We'll start the meeting with our prayer and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United Nations, to the citizens of this country, to the people, to the citizens of this country, to the citizens of this world.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for peace and prosperity for the city that we love. We hope that you give the city council and city staff and the community the wisdom and the courage to work together and come up with the best solutions for our community. In your name we pray, amen. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Have we already added it on the exec session or do we need to add it on here?
You need to add it on here.
Okay. I'd like to add an executive session. Or Sarah, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adjust the agenda and put on an executive session.
Add an...
Add an executive session.
For ten minutes?
For ten minutes.
For attorney's cause?
For purposes of communication with city attorney matters that would be present in question.
And we will also call Keaton on the speakerphone in that executive session. Okay. So just with an exec session added, do we have any questions about the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item D, citizen comments. Anybody from the audience that would like to come up and speak or forever hold your peace?
Well, I don't know. And who was out?
Oh.
Emotional worship, so I bear with me.
You're good.
David Curtis. I've lived here fifty-seven years. And one of the senior citizens were over in the building. We had a group. We started to do, wife and I started a garden about ten years ago. The city was good enough to run water to it for us, appreciate that. The scouts were good enough to put chain link fence around it for some security which people jumped over and stole peoples' drawings, but they thought it was a community garden, so it was theirs. In the past, we had, at first, we had several people. Didn't charge them anything, come down and do their thing. But it got to where we had no money, so all the stuff we had in the building we built was ice crammed up, the old cedar fencing. And a couple of guys helped me build that. And all the equipment, tools, everything, ours. City didn't have anything to do with it except, they finally did buy one more. But it went along and it was going pretty good. And then the older people, they got where they couldn't do anything. So they were coming down. We didn't get any advertising from anybody. It was just word of mouth. Somebody wanted to come down and do it. So it started falling off. And the last couple of years now, there's only been two or three down there to do anything. We didn't, I say we didn't charge them. We charged them ten dollars and at the end of the year, instead of, cleaned up their bed, put everything away, we asked them to come down and help do cleaning up, mow anything. But that didn't work out too well. They'd come down and the ones that did come down and have a bed, they'd plant something and about halfway through the season, they, well, they got tired of that coming down there, I guess, and they just didn't show up. So we kept the ten dollars. But now there's just, like I say, two or three of us to do anything. One of the gentlemen who lives in the apartments down there, my help has been not good, but he's been working after it. And now that you felt you had to sell it for some more duplexes, and you took the land and kicked us out. Now you want to put something down over here, the gentleman down there was kind of looking after it, keeping an eye on things. He's not going to be able to do that. So who's going to do it? You're going to hire somebody from the city to look after their garden? You're going to put thousands of dollars into a building and fencing and everything else down there in the park? I'm afraid to say, if you haven't done a survey and asked anybody that's going to long here or come down and plant something, you're throwing a good after bag. If you're going to spend that kind of money to put a garden down there. I don't know if you've thought about that, but I'd give that a lot of thought and I just am afraid the people that are moving to this town have got young kids, the older people got great grandkids and grandkids, and they have become terribly, terribly busy. I know, I have. I have grandkids that lived here. My daughters went all the way through school there, my kid and he got, two of my grandsons went all the way through school. And next year I'll have four great grandkids going to school there. It's just something that they don't appear to take time or have time with everything that you, kids have to do in school. They're tied up in seven different sports and all kinds of programs. But so I think you ought to look real hard and let your conscience be your guide as to where you're putting several thousand dollars that could be used elsewhere. And so that's my story on that. I've got one more thing that I'd like to say, but I'm stealing somebody else's three minutes away. Thank you. There's two streets here. I sit in my garage and wave at people going by, count cars, I tell them. And that Goddard Road, I live on Goddard Road, and that's the busiest damn highway, it's as busy as Kellogg's, with all the equipment going in and out of Novaks and Myers and your Mares, everything else down here. The school is our biggest employee. Therefore, they have the people running these roads. The school buses, there's what, eighty-some buses sitting over there going in and out? I counted thirteen sitting down in Millieira one day. Thirteen school buses down at that school, holding half of all the kids out, I guess, I don't know. Could somebody have notion enough to maybe go into the school board, say, hey, our street's, First Street, Third Street is a disaster? And I've been told ten years ago, oh, it's on the plans. Well, I haven't heard in the last five years what it is. Maybe it's still another five years off. Why can't we, we spend thousands and thousands of dollars putting up development and annexing a section of land two and a half miles east of town, putting it in the city where the police have to patrol it, take care of it. We have to take care of their streets out there. You've got developments going in around here? How many policemen are you going to hire? How many cars are you going to buy? Forty-five thousand dollars apiece. You've got a headache on your hands, folks. If this town goes, as everybody says, it's going to double in the next five years. You're in deep trouble. I don't know where you're going to get the money. You've got bonds out here hanging out your nose. It's got to be paid off. Well, if they get paid off in ten, twenty years, you haven't got any money in between. It's a good thing for the city, but they haven't got any place to go eat. Go to Ron's or Dairy Queen or someplace like that. We can't get any, look at Derby, guys, they're going crazy down there. They've got somebody going to do some work for them.
Hey Dave, are you good?
Yeah.
Other people I'm sure want to talk. That was good.
That's it. If anyone else wants to talk, nobody wants to, you don't see anything else after their three minutes.
That's it. Dave, thank you. Mrs. Silver's, I know you want to come speak.
I don't know if you remember my name being good or bad.
I got it all in here, I remember.
Okay. So my name is Melissa Silver and I live at 327 Pine. My concern is the issue of the non-conforming lots that you guys have spoken about and the overlay in Old Goddard. The empty lot that I spoke of several months ago next to me is on that target list I've seen. And so my concern is, what does that mean for that property? You guys voted on it to not rezone it, but with this new thing going on with the overlay, does that mean it can still be rezoned in the future? And I know you guys probably can't talk about it because it's not on the agenda for tonight, but if you can...
I will interject, which Terry will be upset at me for interjecting, but we had the joint meeting, I don't know if you watched it or not.
I wasn't able to.
So we had the joint meeting with the planning commission talking about that overlay. And yes, you are right, it could possibly, but what we as the council and planning commission decided was, Micah was going to go back and look at comparisons to other overlay communities like Delano, for example, because they have an overlay district back there. We have a problem with these lots and what do we do with these lots? One of the other problems is if a house gets burned down, termites, you've got to tear it down to the ground. We don't know what a property owner, because they can't build a single family, because the zoning doesn't allow, the ordinances don't allow for a single family home to get built. So we're trying to figure out how we still keep these older lots in Goddard being built. There was several different ideas that were thrown out. So I guess my short answer for you is, I don't know what we're going to do yet. I don't even know if I will be on the council by the time the city decides what to do, because it might take time for Micah to figure out and other things. But that's in particular to the overlay.
That video isn't on Facebook, YouTube, where's that both? Yeah, so you can go watch that meeting and kind of hear the discussion that was had between the planning commission and the council. Because basically, you know, we're just trying to figure out how to protect the citizens who already have single family homes built there, but this zoning and codes have changed since that home was built all those years ago?
So if it doesn't meet the standards of a single family dwelling, then what would it be?
Well, right now, that was, right now, that was the issue with that lot, you know, next to you was, the only conforming part would be a duplex, right? And so if somebody wants to buy that lot and put a single family, right now, they can't.
So it's too small for a single family?
Yes.
But it's all right for a multi-family?
And that's the difficulty.
Which was the, why my brain would wrap around that.
Can I interject real quick?
Yeah.
This is kind of a complicated subject matter. If you want, I'm happy to talk to you about it, nine to four thirty, eight to four thirty in the morning. It's complicated, there's a lot of moving parts, subdivision regulations, planning practice, theory, and application of subdivision code regulations, it's kind of complicated, so there's nuance there. So I want to be clear, I don't want you to get the wrong idea, I think that's one thing versus another right now, but...
You'll leave Micah's office a genius once he tells you everything.
That's probably more like it. So Mike, that lot next to me is still, even though it was voted?
We don't know what, yeah.
It's still in limbo.
There's nothing...
Well, at any point, anybody can come back to the council and ask for us to do the same, to have the same vote we did. Like, they can come back every week if they want to.
Yeah.
So that's the thing.
Yeah.
Don't suggest that.
I don't dwell.
Yeah.
Anybody who's looking at doing that.
Right.
I will call you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. Anybody else? Jeffrey Jones.
Jeffrey Jones, 1069 Harbor Creek. Months ago, when we decided to cut down all the trees for Genesis, I asked the council in the city what the plan was for replanting. That was several months ago. Haven't heard anything brought up, and it came up on Facebook today, so I thought I'll bring it up again, see where we are on the tree planting situation.
Well, I believe I should make it, I have it, I'm interjecting, but what they have, as far as I remember, yes. But there was, the plan was with Genesis, they did plant new trees. There's a whole nother plan to plant trees, like the North Park and everything, but the trees that we took out off the front edge, we did discuss putting in nicer, better trees when the plan for the Star Bond project happened, because they have to have a landscaping plan. And so they have put in, I can't tell you the number of trees that they've put in from there, but, and they'll put in more once the six S and everything goes in, because they have to have plans there as well.
Are we putting a time limit on?
Well, they have time limits on their construction, yes.
So, but is landscaping part of that?
Landscaping's all the way at the end. You don't want to put trees and bushes and shrubs until the construction's done.
But I also think what we're dealing with here...
Well...
I had the night house two years before, I put in trees and shrubs, so...
I mean, you're smart, Jeffrey, so you understand.
That's why I'm here reminding that when we cut down trees to replace...
Right. We can't force a project to get along any faster, but there are plans to have in place to play...
So the city is not going to plant or relying upon the Stephen family to plant or...
That was part of the law under the trees being cut down, that was KDOT's requirement, the majority of those trees were KDOT's requirement to cut down for the Arcas.
Yeah.
So that was not the city coming in saying, just cut down all the trees. We were not...
I didn't get the city's idea to do that.
Yeah. But there will be more trees, especially as it builds out even more, so...
And to follow his thought, where is the new community garden?
Well...
I heard it was moved, but then...
The wonderful Lions Club...
Your backyard?
Bring it on. Just don't hit the water lines.
The wonderful Lions Club behind you. We went driving around town several months ago, me and Dan and Amanda, and they were the ones who came up with the location, right there off of, across from the bus barn, right there in the park. So right there in the park on the east side of the road.
Okay, east side of the lawn?
Yes, yes. And so that was the site location that, you know, we as a community kind of looked at and so, yeah.
May I interject? That would be right on top of the railroad tracks right away.
Uh, I don't believe so, but...
And you don't know what's underneath that ground there.
Okay.
Underneath this. I would doubt that you can't have a grow grass there.
Okay, Russ?
They're doing raised beds.
Yep, yep. We are, we are working on it, so we're doing raised beds and everything, so. Is there anybody else I would like to speak? Amanda?
And one of the reasons that location was chosen was because there's currently water and electricity at that location, which makes it a little bit easier for the garden. Okay, so made a trouble with the Guard Lions Club president?
Daniel Kelly. Yeah.
That didn't look like that.
So tonight, I just wanted to share with you guys, this is our busiest time of the year, which we love, and that's Mitten Tree. So for twenty-five years, Mitten Tree has been a signature service project of the Guard Lions Club in cooperation with many organizations and many of the groups here in town that has helped with the different projects within Mitten Tree. So what Mitten Tree is, is we have an application that is open to all of the community and the district for any families that are in need with or without children. That application opens up on October eighth and goes through November ninth, and that's online on our Facebook page. But anybody that signs up for that does get food for the holidays for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and the children ages zero through fifteen get gifts at Christmas. Last year, we served one hundred and eighty-nine families and three hundred and ninety-one children in our district. That number grows every year, and this year's going to be no exception. In the past, the food drive portion of that, that supplies the food and as well as the food that we purchased in pallets to serve those families, that need has grown. In the past, we just, our schools have participated in that and helped us to collect that as well as what we purchased from donations and from our own funds. This year, we're asking all of our businesses to get involved. Our businesses, our churches, our organizations, the current food pantry we partner with, which is the Goddard Food Pantry, the blessing boxes in town, those are running probably, what, three or four months behind? So we've had our donations for those because they're so low. We'll fill the blessing box at halfway and within two hours, it's wiped out. So the need is a lot greater, so we're asking this year for everybody to get involved. So we've asked our city office to have this in their windows, so we'll have designated drop off locations. We would love for this to become a community-wide food drive, so everybody can support one food drive and then the leftover food after we serve the families for Mitten Tree. The leftover food supports the Goddard Food Pantry, it supports the blessing boxes, and I just learned that there's a Tiger Nation, Isiah has a pantry, so we're learning more about that pantry and how we can support that. But that way, everything can be donated at one time and bundled into all the different pantries and food boxes that we have in town, so we can all work together in collaboration. So I've given you guys a letter and we've sent this out to chamber businesses and non-chamber businesses, letting you know about Mitten Tree, about the different ways that you can participate. You can host your own food drive through October twentieth through the sixteenth. You can host a wrapping paper food drive, a tape food drive, coats, socks, underwear, hats, gloves. All these items are things that we give out for Mitten Tree. All donations have to be in by December tenth. The Mitten Trees, the trees that go up at the library, Pizza Hut in Walmart, Walmart? Walmart goes up on November sixteenth, and they'll be up on the trees for November sixteenth through December tenth, and you can adopt a mitten, which is a child in our community, and make those donations that way. If you don't want to participate in the food drive or you don't want to participate in actually adopting a mitten, we do take monetary donations as well. Those can be dropped off at Empreys Bank and just let them go to four Mitten Tree and they'll make sure it goes into those negative Mitten Tree account. And then also, we have a PayPal account that you can donate to as well. So we have all different ways. And then also on our page, and also you guys have, we listed all the dates of volunteer dates. We open this up to all of our community, for our community members, their families. This is a great way, kids can get involved and sort food and cans and stuff, but it's a great way just to serve your community and get involved. You don't have to be a Lions member. The Women's Club participates, a lot of our schools participate for service hours. So this is, again, my favorite time of the year, and I just wanted to invite you guys also to get along with it, to participate, and then make sure, let everybody know that we're trying to grow this, so that way we can support more families and more of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Amanda. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? So, okay, moving on. Item E1.
Do you want to come on up?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is E1, appointments, recognitions, and nominations. So this is the proclamation of gratitude for the Women's Club. So the Goddard Lions Club would like the city council and the mayor to honor the Goddard Women's Club, the GWC, for their long-running history and contribution to the city of Goddard over the years. According to their website, the General Federation of Women's Clubs, the GFWC is an international organization dedicated to improving local communities through volunteer service. Members embody living the volunteer spirit. The Goddard Women's Club has served in the capacity for ninety years. The GWC has started in nineteen twenty-three, was pivotal in establishing the Goddard Library and the creation of children's early literacy programs. So at this point, in a tranquil, representing Lions Club, I'd like to say a few words, and of course, I believe we have the Goddard Women's Club in the audience, so...
So the Women's Club has, is the longest-running organization in Goddard for ninety years. We're behind them at sixty-seven years, so they have done a lot in this community. And just from what I've learned from the Goddard Women's Club is, they're also the creators of our history book that we currently have in Goddard that kind of captures a lot of the history that we've had for many years up to a certain date, and we're looking forward to hopefully partnering with them to continue from the end of that date to our current date, to continue that history. And it's such a pleasure to work with them and be partners with them and serving our community. And I think it's an amazing accomplishment by all of the women that are in the Women's Club, and I appreciate everything you guys have done and leading the way so we can carry that tradition on and continue to help support you ladies and everything I can do. So I wanted to make sure that we had opportunity to really recognize them and make it a special day for them and show our appreciation as a city and as a community.
Well, thank you. I appreciate, and I thank you guys. You guys, I know that I don't get to talk to you all enough, but I really do appreciate it, and I can't tell you how much you guys mean to the community. You guys are a huge, huge part. So, I don't know, Gail, if you want to come up and say a few things?
Welcome to our evening school. Good evening. Yes.
You've got it, you've got it, Gail Ray.
I just called Gail because I figured.
I know, the club was founded October tenth, nineteen thirty-three, and we are just... and we are just honored to carry on a legacy of community volunteers for this community. Um, I think each decade, there are groups that find their passion, and whether it be the military through the years, the war years were hard years for everyone, and the women in the community really stepped up to help the active service people and the veterans, and each group of women that worked together, meeting together now for a few years, just our little group, um, it, it's a passion to serve a community that has such a hometown feel. Um, one of the things that's very special to us is the partnerships with the other not-for-profits in the community. I think when we work together, we're all stronger and we can do a better job for our community. We had a lovely opening in the library. I hope you get a chance to pop in and see the new Lego Learning Center that we have over there. Um, the library was founded in 1969, the Goddard Library, um, by the club, and it's been supported through the years, and we're just so honored to continue to support the library with Julie and her wonderful staff. And so it's just a real honor to be part of the community, and again, we look forward to all the Thanksgiving. We help serve pie, so that's our next greatest thing. At the community feast, we'll put a plug in for the pies.
I tell, I tell everybody who says, "Well, how do I get involved in Goddard and everything?" I say, "Well, your first stop is the Women's Club," because everywhere you go, there's the fingerprint of-
Well, we're just kind of that little group, but we love to invite anyone that's interested to kind of join us and have a good time with us. And I'd like these ladies right here to at least wave or stand or root in the back. All of these ladies, man. We also are known to bring our husbands along, so we, we would like to be able to be served the Lions. Put our float together, and that was really important. So again, thank you very much for the honor, and it's really a pleasure to be part of the community.
Thank you so much.
Tell me, what's, who has the longest term?
Okay, Ms. Joanne, would you please stand? Joanne celebrated her 89th birthday.
Wow!
Her last pin we gave her was her 45-year pin, and now you are up to fifth.
Close to.
Wow.
Forty-seven.
Yeah, we're getting very close on this, and, and so, uh, next year, she's looking forward to celebrating her 90th birthday on a parade float, so.
Wow.
So thank you very much for the very kind honor. We very much-
Thank you guys so much. You guys-
Not only are they very present, they donated the money to pay for the pie.
Wow.
Our, our privilege, especially for mine, I don't think is well-
It's not, it's not too often where you have an organization in town, and this isn't to discredit any other organization, but that holds so much weight, but then does it with so much grace at the same time, and you guys, you guys do just that, so thank you.
Y'all have a need for a pie tester? I'm about to volunteer right now.
They said their husband's a-
They can work on floats. I don't want to sit there with a fork.
Okay, well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much. Item F, consent agenda?
Item F. Do we have any questions with the consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Brent. Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
This is item H1. This is a South Hawkins Lane update. So a quick background, South Hawkins Lane is a singular entry point of Tenganyika Wildlife Park. This road is traveled by thousands of cars every year as a significant local attraction within the city. On April 3rd, City Council reviewed the possibility annexing the properties of running South Hawkins Lane as well as the road per the requirements of KSA 12520F. Letters were sent out to these property owners, and a representative of the city went to the properties and knocked on the doors to visit with the residents, they, if they were home, and, and the house was acceptable, accessible, excuse me. If the three property owners consented to the annexation, the city was considering annexing the properties in the running road. Afterwards, the city will have a bond council draft petition to be signed, and Matt Faust's Tenganyika Wildlife Park assesses 50% of the cost paved in Hawkins Lane to Tenganyika Wildlife Park, and the remaining 50% to be paid for on temporary notes. Discussions about the annexation occurred on June 9th, and a preliminary draft annexation went out to the property owners. On September 18th, the City Council reviewed the drafted annexation, and it was decided that in perpetuity or forever clause for the properties with the reduced mill levy was not desirable. The amended draft annexation was sent out to the property owners. Uh, there has been some conversation with the property owners, but none have signed the agreement. Uh, in order to pave and maintain the road, the city would need to annex the road into the city limits. However, the state law requires that the city annex any properties that open onto the road according to KSA 12520F, and this is due to the effect of the restriction is to prohibit the city from annexing a strip of land that serves only as a right-of-way, and then using that strip as a basis for subsequent annexations. This is according to page 2-6 of the Kansas League Municipalities. So the City Council's agreed to annexation seven to three Hawkins Lane properties. Annexation requirements are dictated by KSA, the state law, KSA 12520F. Several discussions have occurred, but no further progress has been made at this time. All property owners need to consent for an annexation of the road to occur legally. Uh, all annexation requirements are aligned, as I mentioned, as KSA 12520F, financially none. It is recommended the City Council receive and file, and our staff accordingly. Um, and there was an email from Matt Faust that went out to the council members, so you are aware of that. Um, I believe we need to pass it on, actually, on to Ryan Eck. I don't know if he's actually received it yet or not.
So I guess my two cents about this whole thing is, we, we have options. We could have annexed them with their signed agreements after we've discussed for the last six months and what was offered to them, and they have clearly declined to sign that. We could just annex them outright and do, put in the road and make them conform to city codes and assess them the, the cost. I don't think any of us are willing, wanting to do that. I, no, I'm not. So I, in my opinion, I think at this point, we had a list of projects to go along with that, the road improvements, bond, or-
Right, yep.
That I think at this point, we pull Hawkins off and move on to other projects, because there's plenty of roads in Goddard that need addressed, either paved or upkeep done to them or whatever. And I think at this point, we direct staff to find us other projects.
Perfect. I agree.
I think Sarah's right. We need to move on. We made it very clear.
I, I'm frustrated because it feels like we wasted six months-
We did.
When we could have-
We did. We, we wanted to-
I know, I know the roads wouldn't be all getting paved right now because there's, like, we've got the R cut, and we're going to get the North Frontage Road, and then we're going to get the other things, and it all takes time, and everything can't be done at once.
I think we had a discussion about it, and we, we said last, what, the last meeting?
Two meetings.
Two meetings ago.
We made the decision.
Yeah.
There is not any action on behalf of the property owners, and then I prefer what you're suggesting.
Yeah. So I guess I, I would, if you guys are cool with it, I'd like to direct staff to remove Hawkins Lane from that list and find us some new stuff to fix, or pave, or whatever.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Very good. This is item H.2. This is the main extension program and fee. So, so these staff has looked at emulating the same program, which Tom Mays uses when it comes to extension of distribution lines and lift stations. Uh, the main extension program would assess additional costs in the form of specials for sewer and water distribution and lift stations. Cash flow generated will go into a fund that can be used in discretion of the City Council for the extension of essential infrastructure for residential and commercial development. City Council is reviewing an ordinance to adopt certain language to add additional fees onto new residential and commercial developments to cash flow a fund for extending city services. Um, the language that is distributed, as listed here, is kind of what would be leading for that ordinance, but the primary transmission line shall mean a sewer-water main that runs through a development to serve the development, but is not run between the streets of that development, usually a larger diameter sewer main. Uh, lateral distribution main shall mean a sewer slash water main that runs through development, parallel to streets of that development, and a lift station shall mean infrastructure used to move wastewater from lower to higher elevation, particularly where the elevation of the source is not sufficient for gravity flow and/or when the use of gravity conveyance will not result in excessive excavation depths. And so this language is in that ordinance. The following fees shall be assessed to all developments on top of the normal special assessment process for internal infrastructure. So this would be basically, if a phase is already done, we've already done the assessment proceedings, then they wouldn't apply to this one, but any new phase, uh, would apply. And so what you're seeing here for water would be a main extension fee, and if the square footage was 150,000, then they'd pay an additional special assessment of 10,650, which would be about 71 cents per square foot, or a little bit less, it'd be 7.1 cents per square foot, excuse me. If an individual lot wanted to tap into a water line and they had never been assessed before, then they can pay an individual lot main extension fee per lot frontage, so at $50 per lot frontage. So if, uh, if their frontage is 75, which is pretty typical in an R line, then you would, they would pay an additional $3,750. They can pay it upfront when they request a tap, or we would allow them to have it special assessed over a 10-year period. Same for sewer. It would be 3 cents. At 150,000 square feet, it'd be about 4,500 extra dollars. That'd be assessed to that phase of the development of an individual lot at 75, um, lot frontage at $45 would be around 3,300, 700, 75 dollars, so 3,300, excuse me, 75. And these fees, once collected, would go into a fund, and that fund could be potentially accessed by developers in the future. Because right now, if we start that fund out, it'd be, the fund balance would be zero. We'd have the cash flow of that fund, and it would take some time. Um, we're not at the same scale as larger cities, so these funds would accrue over time, and then potentially five years down the road. If a development was advantageous for the city for us to extend distribution line or a lift station, City Council could take that into consideration and be part of the petition process. The developer could say, "I would like to access that fund." City Council will take that under advisement, and then if so, they could dip into that fund to help offset the costs. Financially, there would be a small cost for publication as it is an ordinance. Legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended City Council waive the reading of the ordinance with a voice phone, then approve the ordinance adding the main extension program to the city of Goddard code with a voiceless roll call. Uh, I'm open to questions and comments, any thoughts on this?
I'll start off. I just want to say thank you, Micah, and then our staff, and our staff that's not here tonight. I don't know where they all went. Maybe I scared them away.
Matt's feeling sick. Brooks has vacation.
It's fine. We, we didn't rat on them. But that, we work really hard. We've been working on this for a while. One of the main issues that the city of Goddard has in growth is how do we pay for these lift stations and these sewer mains? Water isn't terribly expensive in comparison, but we, we do this water fee as well. Um, Wichita does this. Mays just started it. This money will be used to help offset a lot of this cost, like Arbor Creek, 100% of that cost on that lift station and sewer main was on the city. Well, if we can charge these fees on these developments that are tapping into existing infrastructure that's already been paid for, we can collect those fees and then drag mains, sewer mains, put in lift stations several years down the road. But we have to start collecting these fees now so that we have money five, 10, 15 years from now. And we just want to keep snowballing. So I, I will say that there is one caveat that I don't know if Micah mentioned, that let's say hypothetically, a development does drag its own sewer and sewer main, lift station, and water half a mile away, well, then this fee isn't applicable to them because they're paying, they spread the specials out. And so, but we would still charge any other development that taps into that existing infrastructure to keep it rolling.
Yeah, correct. Anybody who specially assesses their own infrastructure for the distribution or a lift station, we won't put an additional cost on top of that, or anybody who privately finances it. We have some developments that privately finance it. We won't special assess them either for that. But anything that, anybody who has not paid for the distribution line or a lift station or assessed it directly, uh, will be, will have this cost likely against them.
Any questions? Karen? Do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance?
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm going to vote.
Yeah.
Like to vote on the waive the reading?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, oh, sorry. I don't know what I was thinking. Yeah, um, motion and a second, all approve?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance adding the main extension program to the city of Goddard code.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor? A roll call. I really butchered this one tonight.
Councilmember Leila?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
The ordinance is named 38.
Name 38. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Micah.
This is item H.3, so this is the master fee schedule resolution. So statute reoccurring fees are not calculated ad hoc or typically included in the master fee schedule for reference by citizens and other cities for comparison and review. Uh, from time to time, changes to these fees or adoption of new fees requires review and approval by the governing body for adoption of a resolution for a revised master fee schedule. Government bodies reviewing a resolution that made the master fee schedule include fees related to the main extension program. Government bodies also reviewing and many of the master fee schedule include the fees related to administrative fee for grass abatement. Resolution will take effect upon adoption of the governing body. So what you just reviewed is the main extension fee, which is right here. And then also, we have an administrative abatement fee that were included at 250. We noticed that we were charging a 250 for what was considered including a reasonable administrative fee under Chapter 8, Article 5, um, but it wasn't reflected in the master fee schedule, so we want to make sure that was included. And so what you're seeing here is a resolution that will adopt those fees into the master fee schedule for what you just approved under H.2, and then an additional fee at 250 for, um, Chapter 8, Article 5, for notice to remove for grass abatement, including a reasonable administrative fee. Financially, an unlawfully approved as a form is recommended City Council approve the resolution amending the master fee schedule.
Make a motion to approve the resolution amending the master fee schedule?
Second.
Motion by Sarah, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much. This is item H.4. This is the interjurisdictional sidewalk agreement. So in 2019, city in partnership with Sedge County and Wichita submitted a partnership letter to support an interjurisdictional sidewalk. The sidewalk will run from 183rd East along the south side of Maple to 167th. Once it crossed over to the east side of 167, which would be the Wichita side, it would drop south about 300 feet to the schools. It would also, at the same time, head north and continue east along the north side of Maple until it terminates at around 135th Street. So originally, the project would include a cost share from the city for a portion of the out-of-pocket costs that Wampall would not fund. Sedge County was recently approved to move the project along the Wampall project application process to the funding stage. Sedge County has determined to allow all of the out-of-cost pocket not paid for through the Wampall funding to be paid for by Sedge County Capital Improvement Project CIP budget. This means Goddard no longer has any out-of-pocket costs. On May 1st, 2023, City Council voted in favor writing a letter of support to Wampall indicating they were willing to allow the construction of the sidewalk. Sedge County and the state of Kansas has drafted an agreement that has been reviewed by Robert Corpin and Al Morris Lang and approved as a form. It states the city is in agreement with the proposed project and allows the necessary construction to occur within the city right of way and the corporate city limits of Goddard. So City Council's reviewing an agreement for the interjurisdictional sidewalk between the city of Goddard, Sedge County, and the state. Starts in the southeast corner of Maple 183rd, runs to the south side of Maple in Goddard until 167th, runs to the east side of 167th, south to the school area, then runs east of 167th on the north side of Maple. Width is about 10 feet, so it's, it's a much larger than traditional sidewalk. You've seen this one before, so basically it would start here, run this way, cross over the Goddard city limits into the Wichita city limits, go south to the school district, and then continue north, across 54, and then run on the north side of Maple all the way to about 135th Street. Financially, none. It's approved as a form by Robert Corpin and Al Morris Lang. It is recommended City Council approve the mayor signing the agreement between the state, Sedge County, and Goddard for the construction of an interjurisdictional sidewalk. So as mentioned, um, I reached out to the county again just to double-check and triple-check and quadruple-check that we're not paying anything out of pocket, and they give confirmed 100% of the cost match will be by their CIP, so their capital improvement program.
Costs are magical, free.
I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor of a free sidewalk.
Right.
So did you check, see if it's free?
Might as well.
If they make at least, just to make it five feet, it's fine, right?
Can they fix Goddard Road as-
I like the way you think.
An elevated sidewalk across Kellogg? I mean, come on. Why, you're giving away free stuff.
What, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Very good. This is item H.5. This is a resolution for abatement of property. So Goddard city code, Chapter 8-502, states that all properties shall have grass and/or weeds no higher than eight inches. Any such weeds and grass shall be presumably dividing the nature if they exceed that height. In the event an individual or entity fails to abate the code violation, the city code enforcement officer may request a hearing before the municipal court to seek authority to access a backyard that's considered inaccessible due to grades or animals. If the individual in question fails to appear at municipal court, the city may seek approval from the governing body in the form of a resolution to enter upon the property abate the code violation as outlined under Chapter 8, Article 2 of the city code. So City Council is considering, uh, approving a resolution to allow the code enforcement officer and/or their abatement team and representative to enter upon the property for the purpose of abating the code violation. This is under Goddard city code, Chapter 8-502, and I quote, weeds as used herein means any of the following as it listed. Uh, in the event a person or entity, and this is verbatim, to whom notice has been served pursuant to Section 6 and 7 of those ordinance fails to remove or abate the conditions constituted nuisance or to request a hearing before the governing body within the period specifying Section 7's or- in Section 7's ordinance, the enforcement officer may seek to abate the alleged nuisance and such election may be in addition to or an alternative to prosecution. Shall not preclude prosecution. In the event the enforcement officer makes such election to remove and abate such officer's shall proceed in the manner prescribed in the section as follows." In yellow is what's happening today. "The enforcement officer shall present a resolution to the governing body for its consideration and authorization such officer to abate or cause to have abated the conditions causing nuisance at the end of 10 days following passage of resolution by the governing body." So what has happened is our new code enforcement officer sent a letter, sent another letter, called, knocked, proceeded to contact our court clerk, and the court clerk went ahead and scheduled it with the municipal court. The gentleman was served and failed to show up. So at this point, we're moving on to this portion of it, which requires a resolution by the governing body saying, in light of all this, the gentleman is now allowed, the code enforcement officer and their abatement team is allowed to enter upon the premises if it's enclosed by a fence and open that fence by any means necessary and abate the property in the back. That's what the resolution states. So this is under city code. Financially, all costs associated with abatement shall be billed to the property owner if it's not paid within 30 days, and lien shall be applied to the property. Legally, it's approved as a form by Robert Corbin and Morris Lang. Process and validity considered advised by the Embarcadero Morris Lang City Executor. So it is recommended city council approve the resolution for the abatement of certain property residing within the corporate city limits. Stand for questions and comments related to this?
I think this will help our staff do their job when there's a real problem at hand. Do we have any questions, concerns?
This is somewhat, this is somewhat abnormal. Normally, people let us in their backyard. Front yards are actually free game, backyards are considered off limits if they're gated or locked, or they have dogs. Generally speaking, we're not allowed unless we actually get permission, or if they fail to let us in, then we have to seek an admissible court, and if they fail to shore up after they've been served, then we have to access, we have to access it by approval of the governing body.
But, I mean, these weeds and noxious weeds and thistles are so tall that...
They're a bit high.
You can see them over the fence from the street, so it's not...
It's out of control.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the resolution for the abatement of certain property residing within the corporate city limits.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Very good. So I'm aye.
Sarah?
Have any things to say?
Oh, um, sorry, I'm like, what, what did I do? I thought Fall Fest was amazing, the local community showed up and did a great job supporting the vendors that were there and our businesses on Main Street. The concert was great. I didn't stay for all of it, I was too cold, I was down. But dipping my hand in those ice cold beer bins to get beer for the community was a little too much, I had to tap out. But I thought overall the weather was great until about nine, then I was cold. I thought it was great event, the chamber did an amazing job, Fall Fest committee just, I can't say enough about how awesome they did bringing it all together and getting the people there, our police staff, our public works staff, they just, everybody killed it, it was awesome. I thought it was a great, great weekend.
Aubrey?
Yeah, ditto. I mean, had a great time. Looking forward to next year. You know, it's hard to top what happened, but I think we can...
Right, I remember now. You said Wichita.
Jeffrey White clapping.
Hey, so... To be honest with you, I was not there. I got a, I got a phone call the next day.
You got to understand, so usually when I'm on, I do a lot of events with my contingent, and it's, it's always in Wichita, it's just... I apologize, I called Goddard Wichita, but I think I corrected that.
I almost said that when I got up this morning. I didn't want to be that, I didn't want to be that person.
I had to be that person.
Oh, that's you, you're up there.
Now the cat's out of the bag, I'm sorry. But had a great time, hope everybody did, and then looking forward to next year. We're going to have a lot of fun.
I'm pretty sure I had a better time just now, this is my comment, by the way. Calling you out on that, that was, I've been waiting the entire time, calling you.
I'll see you out in the parking lot.
Yeah, I had a good time, it was fun.
Well, I, I ditto everything everybody has said. I just want to give a special thank you to our staff who has worked overtime for that event, Public Works, Police Department, I can't tell them thank you enough. And when you're out in the street and you see them, tell them thank you as well, because they deserve it. They, they don't hear it enough, and they should, so. We have an executive session, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters with the city attorney that would be covered by attorney-client privilege. It will be a 10-minute session to reconvene at 8:05.
Perfect.
No breaks, no voice.
Okay. A motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.